Let me call the meeting to order. Um, let's see, you really goofed me up with this agenda.
No, that's fine. Thanks.
So, um, let's see here, public comment, we went to that for this, we're down here now to the Pledge of Allegiance, you take roll call first?
No.
Okay, alright, then I'm, then I'm fine, you just goofed me up, sorry. Okay, um, Daniel, would you please lead us in the front?
Sure. We're with these hands. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for the invocation.
Rejoin me in prayer. God, this is a season for giving thanks, and still we offer our thanks amid the horror of seeing communities throughout California devastated by wildfires. We pray for these sister communities and ask that your healing and peace be present with all that have lost life and home, a sense of place and identity. There is so much for which we are grateful. Our Ripon community has experienced your blessing, we thank you for the schools where our children learn about life and gain wisdom for living. We thank you for the agriculture all around us that sustains us and our community. We thank you for all who have served in the armed forces to fight injustice, to secure freedom and rights for many. We thank you for our city, for all who work to make our city a place of peace and safety. We thank you for fire and police and emergency personnel. May the gifts we've received from you be used to bring Ripon to life flourishing with all that is good and fair and right. Finally, we thank you for our mayor and this city council. Grant them all that they need to do the work to which they've been appointed. Grant them wisdom to govern effectively. Grant them insight to discern true needs. Grant them courage to act for what is right. Grant them the harmony to work together. Bless them in today's agenda and renew us all with the strength of your presence as we join together to make Ripon into a community of respect and joy. We ask this, confident in your goodness and love as shown in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dean Ucker.
Here.
Daniel DeGraff.
Here.
Jake Parks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Leo Zubor.
Here.
Mayor Mike Ristus.
Present. Okay. Public discussion, if there's anything that somebody would like to bring up, I'm not seeing many people in the audience, that's not on the agenda, please come up. If not, we'll talk about it at the time that it's on the agenda. Seeing nobody, we'll go to public discussion, approval of minutes of the regular meeting, October 9th, 2018.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion second. On favor, whoa. Did you get that?
It's not showing up.
Do you see it?
Not here. There it is.
No, did not go there.
Didn't, didn't take it?
Yeah, it's right there. Oh, it says we're all.
Away, everybody's away.
One more time, sir.
Okay.
One more time.
Should we do it again?
Yes, please.
Okay. We need to move her and the second her.
Oh.
Okay, there you go.
I don't know.
Huh?
Dude pissed off.
Holy smokes. Welcome.
We just unlocked the doors.
Oh, we did?
Oh.
Sorry about that, you missed all the exciting stuff.
That's lovely. You could pick it up.
Okay, so we had a public discussion, we had our, um, minutes. Yeah, I will. We had our, um, roll call. So, what we did go through, and I was reminded I should do it, is the public discussion. Anybody in the audience that would like to bring something up under public discussion that's not on the agenda, please come up to the mics, state your name and address, and we'll address it. If it's on the agenda, we'll address it at that time. Okay? Okay, seeing nobody, we'll now move on again to approval of the agenda as posted or amended.
This is where we pull items, right?
Yep.
I have three. I had more, but Dean talked me out of it.
I don't believe that for a minute.
Um, 1.2E, 1.4A, and 1.4C.
And I have 1.1A, 1.4B, and 1.4F. Anything else?
I missed one of that.
1.1A?
1.1A, 1.4B, 1.4F. I'm gonna get confused, trust me.
Okay, no, there we go.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so now we need an approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Amended?
Modified.
Okay, waiting for Jake Parks.
Now, we need to...
Okay. So now we go to approval of the consent calendar as amended.
Daniel, meet ya. Oh.
Now we go to, I guess, 1.1A first. That's mine. So, the reason I brought this up, and I got an answer earlier, but if you take a look at the, um, the invoice, it says that we've received forty-nine thousand five seventy-three to date, but you show we collected eighty-one six oh nine. You indicated that there's, looks like there's a discrepancy, but it's a timing issue, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. So that takes care of that. 1.2E.
My question about this one is, it, it seems like these guys are on the agenda every month. So, A, are they ever gonna get finished? B, how much have we spent on them so far?
So, um, WGR is performing our, our stormwater obligations under the state permit. Um, they're helping us or assisting us with compliance with the permit. So it's something that is gonna be ongoing unless we either hire staff to do those tasks. But the state is continually putting out, um, regulations that we've gotta meet, and they're, they're just assisting us with that process. To date, over the last two years, under this contract, we've spent twenty-six thousand dollars with them to assist us with, with compliance.
And is that general fund money?
Yes.
So, is this permit, is this permitting a process rather than you do something, you get a permit, and then you move on?
Yeah, so it's, um, being a city, uh, we, we're, and, and being that we discharge our stormwater to the river, uh, the state has put a lot of restrictions on us. So we have to do continual monitoring, uh, we have to do inspections on, uh, construction projects. It's, it's just kind of an ongoing process. Um, we have to do testing, uh, we have to oversee the private development projects. Uh, so it's, it's an ongoing process that we have to remain in compliance with.
Okay. So it's gonna be there forever?
It's gonna be there, it's gonna be there for, yeah, forever, basically. Uh, we're in year five of the, the previous permit. Um, year six is next year, and they're already working on the, the next phase of the permit, um, or the new permit, which, which is expected to come out toward, toward the end of next year, so.
And it's only gonna get better or worse.
Exactly. It only goes one direction.
Better for them, worse for us.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we'll take them, we'll approve them all at one time. 1.4A?
Is that me?
Yes, sir.
This, one of the transfers is like six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars to something capital funds. Is it general fund, department, whatever? I can't, I didn't write it down, that's why I... There were three basic places that were sending the money. Part of it's going to street and roads, part of it is going to that list of capital things for the various departments, and then there's a chunk, like six hundred and forty-six thousand, and it's like the general fund, department, capital fund or something.
That's right.
What is that?
So that's the fund that is set up that, um, that we pay different capital items, um, for the general fund department. So, we buy police cars out of there, we buy, um, computers out of there, uh, different capital items for, um, the general fund departments.
This is where I get confused, because that list, that's what's on it, is a couple of police cars and five computers and three of these and four of those and six of those. And so this extra money is set aside for more expenses like that?
Right, so normally during the budgeting process, um, all, all the departments put in their requests, normally those are limited to the, uh, the recurring items that we need to keep buying. You know, we, we've been buying two police cars a year, I think it's seven computers, uh, we've been replacing, or previously we had been replacing so many of the, uh, the cameras we have around town. Uh, so that's what we budget for, and that's how we pay for them, out of the general fund, department, capital fund, that's how we pay for them.
How much is in there now?
Um, I don't recall how much is in there now.
Well, you can tell, so in other words, but it's more than six hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's more, it, it's more, that's, this is what's gonna be transferred over there. Um, with the surplus, what I went back to the department heads and said, um, if there's additional items you need beyond what was budgeted, please let me know. And then that's the list you have here, that, that total of two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Okay.
So that was, um, above their budgeted items, what they requested.
So is the six hundred and forty-six thousand spent? In other words, are they, are the departments assuming now we have six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars and we can buy stuff with?
So, i- it goes into that fund, so as, as part of next year's budget, when we go through the nineteen-twenty budget cycle, they'll put in requests again, uh, for each of their departments, and then we include those in the budget, and they're paid for out of this fund.
Okay.
So we don't...
I'm gonna try to remember that when we do the budget next year, 'cause I wanna see where, where that goes.
Yeah, and I can show you on, on this year's budget, too, if you wanna come by, I could, I could walk you through how we, how we do that.
Alright, 'cause to me, it, it's like it's a duplication.
Yeah.
And, okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, that was 1.4A. 1.4B is mine. Huh?
That was 1.3A.
Oh, did I have that one?
You, you told me 1.4A.
Well, okay, I screwed up.
Okay, so 1 point, okay, that was 1.3A.
Yeah.
It didn't look right, but, okay, so not 1.4A, 1.3A, we got that taken care of.
Yeah, I screwed up.
Now we go to 1.4B. The reason I pulled that, and I got a clarification, but just that anybody that looks at it, the treasurer's report shows we have forty million four fifteen, and by the way, Dan, my notes didn't show up on here, 'cause I had all my notes laid out, so there's quirk. Anyway, but our treasurer's report show there's forty million five something. So there's a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar difference between our investment policy and what our treasury report says, and you wanna explain so everybody understands that, please? Pretty simple, but...
Sure. Our Bank of Stockton, um, operating dollars, if you will, are not included in our investments, and, but it's all one account, and it sweeps. So if there's a large deposit or a large withdrawal on the last day of the month, it hasn't hit that investment account yet, and so it's either miss, a little understated or overstated.
So it's kind of intrinsic?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. I mean, it's not a lot of dollars, but still, it looked like it was missing. Okay, so that was 1.4B. 1.4C?
This one is right. Yes. Um, this is authorizing, authorizing a notice of completion, but when I looked at the payment that's earlier on in the consent, there's still like nine thousand dollars left in the contract. Is that for work that's been done but has been paid, or, because I, when I first saw it, I said, "How can we issue a notice of completion when there's still apparently work to be done?"
Yeah, so essentially, those, those are two items that were, were not needed to be performed. Um, there's a fire hydrant that did not need to be relocated, um, and a small portion of retaining wall that did not need to be constructed, um, with one of the handicap ramps. So there, there were some field changes with that ramp.
So the project cost us nine thousand dollars less than what we thought?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, no kidding.
You take it before you can get it.
Okay, now I've got 1.4F, and the only reason I pulled 1.4F...
Just that notice that we're making?
Yeah, yeah, the only reason I, I pulled that was, um, I understand we're sending it to Washington DC, 'cause it's a federal issue, but I just suggested maybe we send it to our local representatives like, um, Assemblyman Flora and Senator Galgiani, just so they're aware of what our issues are as well, because if maybe they know enough cities that are also objecting, they can help us out. That's all, just a CC.
We, we can do that.
Okay.
But didn't I, I think I read someplace where the state of California passed a law that says you can't do what this federal rulemaking is going to do?
That I'm not aware of.
I read it, 'cause, 'cause I had the same question at first, but someplace I read some, that...
Really?
That, this whole state is actually, will be violating this rule if it goes through, because the legislature did pass a law that basically says local communities will control all this kind of stuff. Knowing that the feds were gonna do this, that, you know, California right now, they say A, we say B.
Yeah, and California passed their own rules and regulations recently.
So how it's gonna work out, I don't know, but...
Trump administration on it. We could reach out to, uh, Flora's office and get some more information about that.
I didn't read that, that's good.
Yeah.
So the state's actually giving us a little bit of control back?
Yeah, but only because they didn't want the feds to have it.
Then we need some more fed interaction.
Yeah.
Apparently, federal's a pretty good thing now.
Okay, so let's find out, but, but again, if we do send it, because there's conflict, I think, I think it'd be fine. Okay, so that's the end of consent calendar, we do have a couple of proclamations.
We just gotta approve the one.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. We need to approve, I'm gonna, I'm gonna list them out, 1.1A, 1.4B, 1.4F, 1.2E, 1.1, I think that's 3...
Well, it was already approved, so you still gotta put the number in there.
Yeah, right, 1.3A and 1.4C.
I'll move to approve the, uh, items called from the consent calendar.
Okay.
It's not letting me?
It's not letting me go in.
Not there.
Quick.
No, no, there you go.
There it is.
Okay, hold on. Okay.
How'd you get in there?
I'm, I'm the first to appear.
Okay, there we go. Now we have proclamations. So we have a proclamation for National Homeless Youth Awareness and November National Caregiver Appreciation Month. So first we will do the homeless and women's center. I think we've seen you here before, thank you, it's good to see you again, oh, they want us in the middle. Not to block anybody, so let's get in front of my place, 'cause they don't wanna block anybody. So what the Ripon City Council is, is providing a proclamation of Women's Center Youth and Family Services National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. Without reading a lot to you, what it's about is working together with women and children and runaway and homeless youth, there are young people that are deeply in need of resources and opportunities, and as I mentioned before, I applaud you for this, um, you know, I've talked to a lot of areas like yours through the different community or different boards that I sit on, and it's amazing what you all do and provide. I mean, it just, you all have the same vision to help people, and I told you before, you know, you, you've got everybody's hearts and minds, and, uh, it's gotta be really difficult to do what you do, and, and I applaud you for it, because I would think that you would go home in tears sometimes, but, you know, somebody does it, and we're very proud and happy for you, so thank you so much once again for what you do, appreciate it, and if you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you, I do wanna tell you this, and I'm to accept this with you guys again. Um, like you've mentioned, runaway and homeless youth are young people who are deeply in need of resources and opportunities in our area, but they do not always have access to that. In San Joaquin County, there is an estimated one hundred youth who are homeless every night, coming from every life circumstances and sharing an experience of home environments that are unsafe and unhealthy for them. Last year alone, Women Youth and Family Services provided shelter to a hundred and one youth at our safe house, which is San Joaquin's only emergency shelter for children, received two hundred and sixty-four calls that are twenty-four hour helplines and, provided shelter to twenty-six youth and young adults, seven children, at Opportunity House, which is the county's primary transitional living program, and provided services to a hundred and eleven youth and nine thousand three hundred and sixty meals throughout the drop-in center that we have. So I do encourage everybody to visit our website when you get a chance, share it with community, coworkers, families, and friends, and on there you'll find our impacts and ways that you can support the cause and, and help to end youth homelessness.
Once again, appreciate it, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. We have another proclamation, Healing in Motion National Caregiver Appreciation Month, and November 10th, 2018 is National Caregiver Day. Thank you for coming and accepting this.
Thank you, very much, council, to your staff.
So, so let me just say a few things about this. You know, it's interesting, because I don't think a lot of people really know what caregivers do unless you've been involved. Um, we've had them for my mother-in-law, my father, and whatnot, and you see, um, the care that these people provide, and, and what they do when families can't be there, and even when families can be there, and it means an awful lot to people, and I don't think caregivers get enough recognition and thank you, and so I thank you for being involved, and I thank all caregivers that are taking care of our moms, our dads, our sisters, our brothers, our aunts and uncles. I think it's a very important thing, and I thank you for that, so it's my honor to be able to provide this proclamation to you.
Thank you, very much, council.
So, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Just to let you know that caregiving is just like taking care of your own, like the military. You should try to thank them for doing what they do best, 'cause some people don't wanna do, some people are meant to be in the military, some people are meant to be caregivers. So, what I'm trying to convey is that, when you see somebody that needs some help, and you see a caregiver, you have to look and say, "Thank you so much for protecting, for taking care of those people unequivocally." It's about we, the people, us taking care of each other, and those who, those who are not, those who can't take care of one another, it takes us to do it. Those can't protect this country, it takes our military to do it. So in essence, caregivers are like the military, taking care of one another. So all I ask of you is that, thank them for doing what they do best, taking care of your loved ones, and it does mean a lot, they do, there's a special kind of person to be a caregiver. I was a caregiver to my parents, especially my mother, so I know what it's like, being there. Thank you so much for listening, God bless you all, staff, council, Mayor Mike.
Thank you, very much. And I said I wouldn't say this, but to the former mayor of Lathrop, I appreciate it.
No, I told you not to say that.
Now, you're safe in Ripon. You're safe in Ripon.
Ucker? I do, Dean. God bless you all.
Thank you.
We'll see you again, huh?
Phil, we, we just appointed you to the, the, the commission, and weren't sure if you were here or not, but would you like to say a few words, we're very happy and proud to, to, uh...
My, I'm still kinda forced.
Can you come up here so we can, just, just so we can get it on tape and listen to it, thanks. No, go on the other side and...
Right here. Oh, that's... I apologize for my voice. Like the gentleman who takes care of elderly, um, I've been taking care of my mom, who's gonna be turning ninety-five in about, hopefully, four more months. Uh, I used to be involved at the other spectrum with children, involved in them, but then I realized I was slowing down. So my competition now is a senior citizens. If you notice, I'm a senior citizen. Um, I got involved with San Joaquin County, I'm gonna be on their executive board to hopefully give good suggestions that advances what I call being able to have seniors live a productive life independently as much as possible without having to be put in what I call, uh, full care centers. We all probably have to get there sooner or later, but my job is to hopefully give, extend their independence in this life as long as possible. I appreciate this council recognizing me, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil, appreciate it. If you have a business card, Dean would like to have it.
Yeah, but he needs it.
Okay, so now we're moving on. Ordinance two, two ordinance is first reading and introduction, the Business Ads Chapter 5.54 to Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations Entitled Mobile Vendors to the Ripon Municipal Code pertaining to mobile vendors within the city of Ripon. Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. Um, as you recall, at the September meetings, uh, staff did provide, uh, some information at the council regarding, uh, mobile food trucks, and at that time, uh, the council did give direction to staff of what they might like to see in, in a draft ordinance. So we have put together a draft mobile vendor ordinance, because, uh, there is other vendors out there, food vendors that, uh, sell wares out of, uh, mobile vehicles. Um, essentially, the ordinance, I'll go through kind of the essential points of it, I'm not gonna go point by point, because I do believe there'll probably be a few questions that we can go through and answer. Essentially, the ordinance would allow for the following, uh, mobile food vendors such as like ice cream trucks and lunch wagons, um, they would be allowed to operate as they always have with, under our code, where they can't, there's no stopping or standing in, in one spot for more than, uh, ten minutes in one location. Uh, a good example of that is a lot of times you'll see a lunch wagon roll through, um, like a building site, when they're doing new homes during, uh, break times, and, uh, workers will come out and get, uh, items off the food trucks. Typically, items on those trucks are prepared, uh, food already, they're not being made as they're waiting, um, it's already warmed up sandwiches or burritos, um, and stuff like that, that they're getting off those trucks. Um, that is one of the categories that's in our, in our new ordinance here. Um, secondly, mobile vendors, uh, would be allowed to operate on private property for what we call a private invitation-only event. Um, there is a definition in the ordinance that defines what that is. Um, it would be events such as, um, a birthday party, wedding receptions, anniversary parties where people would have, um, invited guests come to their homes, and then hire somebody to come, obviously, uh, prepare food for them, such like a caterer would do, but a lot of people are starting to do that, where they'll bring a food truck or a mobile vendor in to do that, that event. They are defined, like I said, in, in the new ordinance, and, um, and they would, um, be, basically be allowed to be parked on private property, uh, for those events. Um, we have also allowed under the, under the new ordinance, uh, something what we call a mobile food truck event. Um, we are looking at allowing that in certain areas within town, um, on, such as private property, and then also a couple of public locations, which, uh, we have allocated Missland Sports Park or the Upper Stoper Park for those type of events. If someone wished to do that, it would require a special events permit to do that event, and, uh, they could be held, um, on a monthly or bimonthly basis, to where, um, mobile food vendors or mobile vendors could congregate together and have an event, um, like that for the general public. And then, um, lastly, there's some exemptions that are allowed within the code, uh, such as mobile food ven, uh, mobile vendors on or at school facilities, uh, some, a lot of times you'll see a football game where they'll bring a mobile food vendor in for such an event like that. Uh, recreation facilities, uh, Babe Ruth, a lot of times would have a, a food vendor down there for their events during the baseball games. Or, or as part of special events permits, uh, Main Street Days, farmers markets, you'll see, are starting to have some, uh, food vendors, Hamm and Blossom Festival and such. So those are the, the areas that we tried to define within the ordinance. Um, like I said, I won't go through line by line, but I will entertain any questions if you guys have any at this time.
Questions, anybody? Leo?
One of the things that's in there is a four-hour limit for this, and I've shared this policy with some people, and that's one of the questions that comes up, is suppose I have an event that's gonna start in the afternoon and run into the evening, why can't I keep the food truck around?
I mean, that's something, obviously, that's open to the council for as far as policy ma, uh, decision-making. What we've typically seen with these type of events is they'll roll, uh, and a, a mobile food truck would roll in... truck would roll in, feed the group that's there and then, and then leave or go back out. Other events we've seen, it's not necessarily a mobile food truck, but mobile vendors would come in, like a, there's some mobile boutique-type shops or stuff that sells pet items. They'd come to an event for a shopping event in the evening where they would hold an event at a business, they might be parked outside for that period, a slight period of time. Typically, we're not seeing those things go past a four-hour timeframe, but if that's something the council wants, council wants to entertain or, or extend, certainly can do that.
Okay. Number two, what is a non-residential private developed property?
Private developed property is defined in the code, that means property owned by a nongovernmental legal entity such as the city or county or such, and has been approved pursuant to our code. So either a house has been built on it or a business paid their development fees, that's what private development property is, so non-residential private developed property is anything that's not residentially zoned, that it's, it's not residentially zoned, but it's developed piece property.
So it's okay to have a food truck down by the industrial part of town, but not okay to have one in my cul-de-sac?
Correct.
Okay.
And when you talk about having it in the industrial part of town, that would be for a private invitation-only event. They're not just allowed to show up on private property and just sell to the general public, unless it's a food truck event that is done with a special events permit.
And who decides that?
That's what the ordinance goes through.
I know, but who makes the decision of whether it's a private property selling to the public or a private property food truck event that's selling to the, what's the difference?
What's the di, the difference would be, say, a, a company that wants to bring a food truck in for their employees to, to have an event or a special type of event where they're feeding them lunch, employees are the ones that they're serving, they're not open to the general public, general public can't just drive up, they're not open for business to the general public to drive up and go to that event and frequent that, that food truck.
Suppose they wanted to do that?
That's not allowed within this code. And that's kind of what we heard the council's desires at the September meeting, saying we didn't necessarily want food trucks to be able to be parked throughout different areas of town on private property just to be open to the general public.
But they can ask for to the general public, correct?
Correct.
So do they have to police it? If some, if somebody has one that's for their people? And some of these kids sitting right here that get out of school at eleven-thirty on a weekday and they go downtown and all of a sudden they realize, "Hey, look what's here." Who's responsible for making sure they don't go over there and eat at that food truck?
Well, I, so you can have, you can even have a business, say, down in the industrial area where they're serving their employees and somebody comes up and, and goes to that event, but if you start seeing a food, a mobile food vendor locating a spot just open to the general public, it'd be up to, up to us to go police, which we have done in the past. We've actually seen these things located out by the truck stops and we've had to go chase them out because it wasn't allowed within our ordinance.
Well, I'm not talking about the vendor, I'm talking about the kids. Let's assume that Bank of Stockton decides that they're going to bring a food truck onto their property on Wednesday so that their employees can have food out of that food truck that day, and at eleven-forty, nine hundred kids start wandering downtown and eleven-forty-five, about twenty of them realize, "Hey, instead of spending my money over here, I'm going to go get something over there." Who's responsible for it?
I don't know if you're ever going to stop that totally from happening, but they can't have that on a consistent basis. So what you're trying to prevent here with the ordinance is this thing locating daily or weekly at the Bank of Stockton to go through this?
I understand that, I got it, but the way the ordinance is read, the example I came up with is also in violation of the ordinance. And what I have a problem with is when we, as a city government, sit here and say, "Yeah, but we're not going to do anything about it." Because the next time something comes up, the question becomes, "How come you're doing something about this, but you didn't do something about that?" That's, that's where my problem starts.
No, I'm not quite sure, I understand how to write that in the code.
But if our ordinance says that and Bank of Stockton brings in a mobile, isn't Bank of Stockton's responsibility to make sure it's properly?
Yeah, it should be, I mean...
I mean, somebody's got to be responsible, if they're the ones inviting them, it seems to me they'd be breaking the rules. I mean...
What's, what's the penalty for breaking the rule on that? What's the penalty if someone does, does break the rule?
They'd be in violation of the ordinance, we would actually tell the food truck to, to leave. I mean, it's similar to, like I said, one parking in town now, a, a lot, they're not allowed, so we would, we've chased them off before.
Because we know that's going to happen. It's going to happen, no doubt.
What about like a customer appreciation day? So, and you say Bank of Stockton does a customer appreciation day?
Right, can be able to do their customers as well.
This says you can't, this says you can't do that.
No, the, the one section, yeah.
A customer appreciation day would fall under a private invitation event.
Yeah, it's besides the section B, right?
Like a business having an appreciation for their customers to come? I mean, that, that does fall under the private invitation event.
But they couldn't do a customer appreciation day every Friday?
Correct.
It'd have to be a...
How often could they do it?
Every third Friday.
Well, but the work can sort that out as opposed to us sorting it out. That would be more...
Inconsistent basis means not occurring on a regular basis as determined by the planning director. As soon as you draw a line in that sand and say not more than once a quarter, more than once a month, that, you're going to get challenged on that. So, I mean, it's got to, there's got to be some discretion, I think, left to staff at City Hall to say, "Hey, this is starting to occur on a weekly basis, this is just a food truck trying to locate in town."
Okay. Not sure I agree, but okay. Next, one of the things is that if, if there is an event in a residential area, it has to be parked in the driveway. Why do we allow a motor home to park on the street for up to three days and we will not allow a food truck to park on the street for four hours?
So it, it's not necessarily the size of the vehicle that you're talking about, it's, it's the potential, I think, the potential of having like a food truck spill grease or something like that on, on the city street that they're cooking that, that becomes our issue to have to go clean up. If you've got a paver street or even asphalt street and there's an oil spill from a food truck on the city street because of a block party, then it's, it becomes kind of our issue to go deal with, and what's the purpose behind that?
Then you can send them a bill.
And you could certainly do that, I mean, I was looking at the block party, there's actually a block party permit that the police department does, it's kind of a block party agreement, does talk about, if the police department's called out, that, that the people that are having the block party can be responsible for any expense incurred. We can actually add stuff on there too, that if there's any damage to that, certainly someone could close down the street and then have some of these mobile food vendors as part of a block party if, if that's...
Yeah, and I'm not asking about blocking off the street, although I'm wondering why not, but we'll get to that, but I just have a problem with the idea that I can't have a food truck on the street, I have to put it in the driveway, but if I have a trailer house in the driveway, I got to, I get cited for that versus a food truck.
See, and I, I get what you're saying, but I looked at it more from a safety issue. When you start having food vendors, beginning of people start moving, that's what I looked at, and I didn't think about that part, but I was looking at it more from a safety standpoint and it made some sense.
Well, let's be honest, if I have a food truck in my driveway or I have it on the street in front of my house, you got the same safety issue.
I, I had one, my next-door neighbor had one, he had it in the driveway and everybody stayed in the driveway, I mean, I, but that was...
The one thing Stacy and I were just talking about too, you are going to get a group of people at the food truck trying to get their food all at the same time, you're going to have issues with blocking the sidewalk also.
In a residential area?
And when I'm walking my dog, I don't want anybody to block my sidewalk.
And cross the street.
Why should I have to go out of my own way?
I'd stop and get some food and then keep walking my dog.
I, I don't know, I just, there's a part of me that says we are being so restrictive on this, and the reasons I'm getting, for me, are maybe half okay. This is something we've been talking about for a long time, and it's almost like we're bound and determined not to do it, but say we will. I just, I have a problem with that, this, I'd rather come back here in six months because we've had four grease spills and three people run over and killed and say, "We got to kill this," than to start with the assumption that all that is going to happen, therefore we're going to not open this up. That's just me. I think we're just, we're going a little bit overboard here, not giving people credit.
I don't have a problem with anybody, I mean, I don't have a problem limiting it to the driveway, anybody else?
I'm, I'm more in Leo's camp here on this one, I, I think we're intentionally trying to gerrymander it to where it's, it, it's only on Tuesdays at eleven o'clock, every third Sunday that falls on, you know, that's the first, you know, that's the thirtieth of, of the month or whatever, and so I think that we need to, maybe even if we need to take a pause on this and kind of let it settle, let it settle down, and then go back and re-look at it with fresh eyes, I think we can, and I think we should, but I'm more in Leo's camp that it feels like we're intentionally trying to set up roadblocks where I don't think any need to be set up.
I see Leo's point when it comes to the residential areas, maybe, I mean, if I want to have a, the cupcake lady show up at my house and have a party, she parks in the street, she parks in the driveway, I don't think it really matters to me. As far as the limitations and the structure we've set up for as far as in, you know, for businesses downtown, et cetera, I think we're probably on line with where I'd want to be, so that's my input.
Well, and I'll, I'll agree with the second part of that, the idea that we're going to keep this from, you know, there was a guy that was here at the meeting when we were talking about it who lived in Salida, and that was the point he made, that they had overrun the town, I do not want to see that, no way, shape or form. But the idea that we're going to assume that any little bit of wiggle room we give somebody is going to result in that, I think we're, I think we're overreacting.
Well, then maybe we change it and, and take a look at it and see what happens, see what the result comes out to be, and if it becomes a problem, then we can go back and look at it again, right?
Well, I, I'd like to see the somehow relaxing that four-hour limit in residential area and see what happens, and I'd like to, fine, you want to park the thing on the street in front of your house, go for it.
I would say we make those two changes as well.
Yeah, other than that, I'm probably pretty good with the rest of it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree, I mean, if somebody wants to have it for eight hours, they have it for eight hours, here's a question I have though, but if, so if food vendors were to park on the street, which lets us, we'll, we'll do that, they got to be careful, so I guess they got to follow the same rules about if they run cords and stuff like that, right, or across the sidewalk, we're going to have to...
That would be the same as, as we, with RVs and such too, you're not supposed to block.
All right, all right, as long as that's included, I guess, with people on trip and fall and all that.
And that's certainly something, like I said, we could, the council can adjust that if they'd like, like having an event, a private event, if they park in front of the house or in the driveway, e, e, either way is probably fine. The four hours was just something that we threw in there because that's how long we thought some of these events last. Typically, you see them, like I said, roll up to, to serve an event and then they, they pack up and go, they want to have them there longer, you know, just during the event, obviously they can be there, so if the event's an eight-hour event, probably not a big issue. I think that the big issue is where people don't want to start seeing these things on a daily basis, parking somewhere and saying, "I'm here for this private event."
I have no problem with that.
Right, but I think those two changes, we're not going to really see any negative effects.
We make those changes.
The last question I have has to do with where they can be. As I read this ordinance the way it says now, if there is some sort of a special event happening at the community center, they cannot include a food truck in that event.
No, they can, so...
Where's that? I, because I thought it was public property, therefore we were saying no.
Oh, you're correct. It, it basically, the two parks that you're saying that they can be allowed at would be the Missland Sports Park or Upper Stofor Park with a special events permit.
I thought we had something in there, if they rented the community center, that they could have a food truck as part of it.
Under exemptions, there you go, yes, under exemptions, mobile food, mobile vendors as part of a special events permit issued by the city, so as part of this, if they're under the exempt, so they'd be all part of a special events permit, that they could do that.
Okay.
Well, we're saying a mobile, when you're talking about just a mobile food truck or a food truck event only, we're saying that can be on private property or Missland and Stofor. Those, those are the two public parks that we would allow just a food truck event to happen at, that they could do a special events at any of these other places that include...
All right, I got it.
Hey, Ken, what's the wait time on a special events permit again?
Three years.
I think we should relax.
Don't, don't, yeah, yeah, don't give me ideas.
Ted, do you know the answer to that? I don't, I don't deal with those as much as...
I believe it's like a week or two.
Couple weeks.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I thought it was like sixty days.
Oh, no.
Okay, no, that's, that's...
If it's available, as fast as you can get the paperwork done.
It depends, it depends how, whom, who we have to reach out to and how fast we can get a group together to look through the...
Because you go to fire, police, generally public works.
Mr. Mayor, the traditionally, or currently, they're about ten to fourteen days, by the time they're submitted till they're notified whether it's been granted or not.
Okay, that's pretty good.
Okay, Mrs. Attorney, can we first read and adopt this with the two changes that we talked about, and then it would come back in a month, and if the changes are there, we keep going, or do we have to wait a month and the first reading and adopt with, after it's changed?
Just to be clear, the two changes are the eight hours instead of four hours?
Correct.
And then, what was the other one?
Park on the street.
Park on the street or in the driveway.
Er, excuse me, instead of the park, I think that's fine.
Well, I'd like the, the time limit to say that it can only be there during the time of the event.
I just say, don't put a time limit, just say during the event.
Yeah.
Unless I have a three-week...
Nobody will care because we'll all be there.
Exactly. So we, we can make those changes and come back and do a second reading next time? Okay?
Then I will move to adopt the ordinance with those two changes.
Okay. Okay. Three, discussion items, staff has recommended city council reduce the February one, twenty nineteen water rate increase from eleven to four percent, reduce the sewer rates increase from ten to zero and move forward with the five percent garbage rate increases originally approved. Now, I just want to make one comment, private business versus government, when you increase something less than what you were going to increase it, you're reducing it, but go ahead.
You're reducing the increase.
I got that word, you too. Oh, gotta love Kevin. Oh, Elizabeth, gotta love Elizabeth.
Yeah, it's me on this one. All right, I'm just going to walk through this really quickly, and I'll take questions at the end, please. But, so in two thousand fifteen, we passed our resolution, and we went through the Prop two eighteen process to adopt these enterprise rates, and we've done, been reviewing these rates for the past three years and implemented the recommended rates. Last year was the only year that we had to change and we reduced the sewer rate increase from ten percent to five percent. And so now this is, we're doing another evaluation, which will be implemented in February of two thousand and nineteen. So here is just an overview of our enterprise funds and the targets we have for them, the water and the sewer are meeting, currently meeting the targets, and the garbage is met the target transfer to capital fund but did not meet the final ending cash balance. So for, yep.
Can we ask questions as we go?
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than I save them up at the end?
Go ahead. Do you have a question on this?
Yep. Those three transfers that are listed?
Yep.
Where does that money go?
To our capital fund account.
To the capital fund.
The enterprise.
Yeah, enterprise.
These are enterprise operating funds going to enterprise capital funds.
Gotcha, all right, thank you.
So for the water, this is an overview of what it looks like right now, so for two thousand and eighteen, you could see that the target and the actual are pretty close, but we still are projected to be higher than the target, so we are recommending a two percent for this coming year increase, and then we projected two percent for the fiscal year twenty, but again, we'll come back and review that before that increase is implemented. And the increases would be beneficial because they would get residential and commercial rates more in line to be the same. For sewer, here's what it looks like for sewer, and you could see we're doing quite well, the ending cash balance is way above the target, so this year we're... The ending cash balance is way above the target, so this year we're recommending a zero percent rate increase. Um, we're projecting a two percent, uh, for fiscal year twenty, but that may go down depending on the study next year. And, um, at the top there, you could see that we have, um, three hundred and eighty thousand reserved by fiscal year twenty for the wastewater treatment plant and two point two million re- res- reserved by fiscal year twenty for the capital expenditures for sewer.
I have another question.
Yep.
That wastewater treatment plant reserve, the gray stripe at the top. As I recall, when we adopted this, part of the fee was to go into that fund because we know at some point in the future, A, the wastewater treatment plant will not have enough capacity for the town at that point, and B, there are going to be changes in the requirements for wastewater treatment, and we're gonna have to upgrade. Can you refresh my memory of when we think that's gonna happen?
So this is something that, um, the engineering department looks at once a year when we go through the capital improvement program. If I remember right, uh, they, they look at it five years, um, and it was not needed, uh, or at least the first phase of that expansion was not needed in the next five years. I would guess in the next five to ten years.
Part of it would be from this gray account.
Yes.
The other part would be an adjustment to PFFP.
Exactly.
Funds for new construction to pay for.
Exactly. And then when we hired RMC consultants to put together that facility plan a few years ago, um, they allocated those costs based off, uh, what growth would be required to pay and what existing users.
And what about the, not expansion, but upgrade?
Yeah, so, uh, we have a very favorable permit for, for us. Uh, at, at some point, we're gonna reach our disposal capacity that we're allotted from the state in that permit. Once we reach that, this, this very likely it's, um, that, that the state is going to issue a new permit with much more stringent limits, uh, discharge limits. So at that point, we are gonna have to go to a more advanced, uh, treatment system. That is a very large, uh, project, probably on the order of thirty-five or thirty-six million dollars to do that.
And we're not putting any money aside for that?
Yes, uh, this, this will also go aside for that, uh, that, that's further down the road, uh, further out than five to ten.
So that twenty thousand dollars a year, A, it'll get bigger as we get more users, but that is for both.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I think when we set this, we, we projected that out when we came up with these rates and how much we're being allocated. This is something that we just started in fiscal year sixteen. Before that, we've never been putting money aside.
I'm just trying to keep straight in my mind whether it looks like we're gonna be there when we need it.
Yeah, and, and so we, we laid out, I think, a couple of options when Tom Pavlatic went through. Uh, I think what we recognized back in fiscal year sixteen was we just had to start doing something because we hadn't been doing anything. And you can see on here, it's incrementally getting bigger over time, and the plan is to continue to do that, uh, so it's not such a shock to, to the ratepayers. And, and I think we recognize as we went through that, it's very likely you're not gonna collect enough money at the end of day when you have to do these. But what that money will do is reduce, uh, the bond.
The bond.
That we have to go out and get.
So the permit expired with capacity, not with time?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that's the way it's supposed to happen.
Well, you know what they do with, you know what they do with Stockton, they made them treated so well that they treated it so well, they had to back off how they treated it because they made it too clean for where it was hand-built. But that's state government.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for sewer? All right. So this is the garbage account. As you could see, it's below the targeted, um, this year. By the end, uh, by fiscal year twenty, they should, um, our ending cash balance should be very similar to what we projected in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, we're still increasing towards our goal, it's just gonna take us a little longer to get there because of extra expenses for that account.
Can you do me a favor? Go back two slides? Three slides? Okay. I see water ca- your targeted cash is fifty percent or point five of expenses. I get it. The next one's point five. Why is the last one point three five?
It's a more stable fund. There's not, um, really any volatility. Um, there's not, um, there's much lower expenses and revenue coming in and out, so it's just, it's, it's not as, um, I don't know the words to say it.
But I mean, fifty percent is fifty percent. It may not be as volatile, but you still have expenses.
The other thing is that, uh, the garbage account does not have any debt associated with it. So both water and sewer have bond payments we need each year.
I got you.
So that was also part of the reason that we wanted to make sure we had enough, uh, reserves set aside to make those.
Overpayments, okay.
With the garbage, uh, there is no debt associated with it.
Okay, I get it. That makes sense. Thanks.
For an actual bill, um, it's with a two percent water increase, zero sewer, and five percent garbage. Um, the bill for a single-family residential, um, resident could, uh, goes up about three percent total. So their bill could be looking at about ninety-eight dollars and going up to a hundred and one dollars. So the increase is minimal. From two thousand and fifteen, um, they should be at a hundred and eight dollars if we implemented all of the rate increases. So here's just an overview of what we, uh, proposed rates in two thousand and fifteen that were adopted. And then table two is the implemented rates and what we're currently proposing for the next two years. And again, we reevaluate these every year, and as you can see, they're well below, uh, what was proposed in two thousand and fifteen. Are there any other questions?
I have one more. It's not about this. My question is, in two thousand and fifteen, we adopted a rate structure that covered five years and had built-in increases. If we reduce the implementation of one of those, have we lost the ability to impose that rate, or could we come back and do it later if the bottom fell out or what would happen?
Yeah, you could still implement those rate increases. What those were saying was you can't go over that amount in each of those given years. So if, if it says, uh, twenty-seven dollars for two thousand and nineteen as base rate, we can't go over that, but we could definitely increase it to twenty-six dollars if we wanted to. But, um, and then, you know, we could work up to that final, um, fiscal year twenty, uh, what we adopted amount.
My question, yeah, go back.
No, you could keep increasing, uh, years beyond that. It's just the rate, the maximum rate that we adopted. We can't go above the rate we adopted.
Yeah, go back one slide. In other words, what we adopted was there was supposed to be a sewer rate increase of ten percent for two thousand and nineteen. We're proposing it to be zero.
Yeah, and like this school year twenty twenty-two, we could still increase that to ten percent.
That ten percent?
Right.
Anytime?
Anytime, yeah. Just not beyond that percentage.
Right, no, I understand that. Once we get to the maximum, we're stuck unless we go through the process again. Okay. Cause my concern is when we did this, we had some things in mind that were gonna happen, and I get a little nervous when you back off and don't do it, and then three years from now, well, instead of twenty perc- ten percent, we're raising it twenty percent.
And I think, uh, when we went through this the first time, obviously we have limitations with two eighteen, and two eighteen provided you the ability to go out five years. Well, your crystal ball's fairly clear. Obviously, you can see here in the first three years, it gets a little fuzzier after that.
Right.
I, I think the council's direction, the staff, about going out and reevaluating this was, was obviously a, a good direction. But what it does give you, instead of a five-year rate increase, it could, you could have the same rate increases over seven years.
Six or seven years, as long as we don't end up above what we approved.
Exactly.
In total.
In total.
All right.
And these, uh, on the screen are, are what we approved back in two thousand and fifteen. So, uh, for a one-inch meter residential customer, that thirty-six dollars and forty cents, we could work up to that however long it takes us to get to that rate.
And are we getting closer to having commercial and residential water rates? Cause I mean, they were way different when we started, and one of the, I, one of the things in here is to try to get them all equal.
So on the screen here, you can see what they look like right now and what they're gonna look like, uh, recommended. And, yeah, they are getting.
So we got there.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions coming? So, so the comment I will make is I'm, I'm typically the kind of person that says, as long as we got it budgeted in there, grab the money, set it aside and kinda hoard it, but that's the wrong thing. That, you do that in private business. Government, I think it's right to, to give people back their money or not increase it. That's just the right thing to do. As much as I would like to hoard it and save it for a rainy day, almost like what Leo's talking about. Um, I think this was, so I applaud you for doing that rather than just keeping it the same. If you had kept it the same, we would've just gone on and had bigger reserves. So I think this is a good strategy. I like what you guys did. Thank you. That's my comment. I don't know if there's others.
No, I would say that this is the quintessential definition of good stewardship. So it's recognizing the fact that when your, your projections are off, that you go back and readjust and, and, um, do so.
Okay, anybody else?
Do, do we need action on that?
We need a motion.
Go ahead, Jake, come on, do something.
Oh, Dean beat me to it.
He wants, because, because Stacy said seven o'clock and it's seven oh two.
Stacy, can you give me the dirty stuff, hurry up and do it.
Okay. B, discussion, no action on the financial audits. I looked at them, I have no questions.
Nope, I, I wanna read them.
Okay. Wanna read? Wanna read them to the record?
No. But they'll come back for action in December, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And thank you for giving them to us in time, to have plenty of time to read them.
You're welcome.
Once again, I have seen my notes on my, written, but there's no notes that showed up on my thing there.
Way to go, Dan.
Something goofed up. You're lucky. I guess we will get out early. I guess Stacy got a hold of Dan before the meeting. Okay. Policy for banners and right-of-way. Staff has recommended city council consider approving a tax policy for banners and right-of-way. Again, I have notes on there, but I don't see them.
There were some brilliant thoughts too.
I bet. This is.
So who's?
I, I'll hand you this one, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is something that, uh, the city council asked staff to go back and consider a, a banner policy. This was a follow-up or, um, a result of the conversation we had about the American Legion and the banners that they were requesting to be installed on the, uh, streetlights along Fulton Avenue. So what this, this draft policy does is, um, it allows, uh, other nonprofit entities to place banners on streetlights in the public right-of-way. Uh, the banners are intended to promote community-wide, uh, not-for-profit initiatives and shall not be used for any fundraising or as advertising for, for, uh, private business or related enterprises. Do list certain requirements of the banners, uh, the size and, and the images, uh, that are supposed to be on there, and what they're gonna be made of. Uh, the other part of this, we did list, uh, what nonprofit entities would be, um, uh, able to, to apply, to install banners on streetlights. So there's, uh, five different requirements, uh, as part of this draft policy. Uh, as part of the approval process of this, um, a nonprofit who is eligible uh, will, will submit an application to the planning director, and he will determine if they meet all the requirements set forth in this policy. The last thing I'll, uh, I'll mention is that it would require an encroachment permit from the engineering department, similar that we talked about with the, uh, American Legion, the desires to make sure that they have the right brackets that they're attaching to it, uh, and they have a licensed contractor who's going to, uh, install it, maintain it, and remove the, the banners.
This is an example, Kevin, of, um, what the veterans are doing for their.
We had this on Veterans Day, isn't it, out there? Oh, yeah, there's, there's a good-looking one on the left.
So that, that's the type of banner that, that we're talking about. Uh, the one thing I'd also point out, uh, is we, we get requests at various times, uh, for banners along, um, Second Street near Stockton Avenue. That's really something we don't have a policy on or anything in place, so we have included an exemption here allowing, uh, banners for certain events. Uh, they're listed as Emma Blossom, Fourth of July, Soaring Over Ripon, or Main Street Days, or any other city-sponsored init- or initiated events, um, are able to put banners across Second Street for, to advertise those, um, those events. And then we also excluded, uh, American flags are installed on city-owned streetlights along the central business district, along downtown, or Main Street.
So I do have a question on that. That's what, was one of my notes. So is Soaring Over Ripon a city-sponsored event?
I believe, uh.
Chamber.
It's a chamber event?
The chamber, but we included it in the, in the ordinance as a city-sponsored.
Okay, because we have a resolution for First Responder Appreciation Day, does that mean that can't, banner cannot going forward be put up? Because we use Second Street for that First Responder Appreciation Day.
Yeah, if you wanted to include that, we could add that to.
Well, I like to because we do it every year. We have done it every year so far.
Yeah, I, I, there's certain events that the council would like to be added to this. Uh, we certainly could, could, could add that.
Could it, could you?
Right.
Could you generalize that it is a, a city-approved or some kind of event? Cause otherwise, that list is gonna keep rolling and rolling and rolling.
And we do get a special permit for it at that point, so maybe if it has to go through a special permit, that'll do it.
Yeah, but you're right, Love Ripon, we, we get those.
Yeah. So, and do they do a special permit for that? But if they do a special permit, then at a time they could, yeah.
Right, well, like I said, there, there's no policy in place.
Maybe as long as meets a special permit requirement or something.
Yeah, we could put some, maybe some requirements in there, so.
Cause you'll never list them all.
We could put some thought into some language that could do that.
You want some more questions?
Yes.
Um, under permissible use, it says no advertising for, for profit. I guess my question is, do we really want advertising of any kind on a light poles in this city? What we, what started this is not an advertisement, it's a recognition program. And so I would suggest that we figure out a better description of what we can use these things for, because otherwise you're gonna get somebody, well, hey, we're gonna have a car show, we're not gonna charge anybody, so we'd like to put a sign up there. Or, hey, we're gonna have this event, we're not gonna charge anybody, and it's a nonprofit, we'd like to put banners up.
You can fit the requirements and be something that we never intended.
Right.
Well, you know, we, we say that.
It just says for profit.
We, we say that upfront, and then later on, we say for, for nonprofit initiatives and events. We probably, I, the, the intent was not to allow the, the advertising, it was more the initiative.
Get on being a specific.
Uh, number two, there's a list under requirements. I'm just suggesting you reorder it because as I was reading it, I kept, I came up with a question, two places down, it was answered. Then I came up with another question, one place down, it was answered. I think if you listed them in the right order, the questions would never come up because they, they would build on each other. Okay, I'll give you my suggestion. And then the last one is, it says, one of the requirements is the organization has to be housed within the city of Ripon. The VFW is not housed inside the city limits. And that new Church of Christ, they're not housed inside the city limits either. So, I'm just saying.
Yeah, an alternative to that, if the council would like to consider, is maybe using this, this very influence.
The greater Ripon area.
Then you're gonna have Antica people coming this year.
The VFW is not doing that, those flags, that's the American. No, no, but anything else.
They couldn't do anything because they're outside the city limits. That was my only point.
So, so I have two questions. One is, why does it have to be, I understand why. One is, why does it have to be, I understand why, what you're gonna say, but why does that have to be vinyl? What if it's some other kind of material that withhold, stand up better than vinyl? And always look good?
We, we can add it-
Yeah, or metal. I mean, no, you could aluminum, aluminum, you can put the holes in it and it'll hold up a lot better.
We, we can add an or equal. Your intent is to have some that's in stand-up over the top.
Exactly.
So we could add or equal material.
Yeah. The other thing is too, going back to Leo's comment about, um, entity must, well, it's one of the five. Entity must operate and conduct regularly in the city, but I would add, and they must keep minutes. Cause you don't have any organizations say, yeah, we have meetings all the time. There's no minutes, nobody knows what's talking about. You have to, by law, keep minutes if you're gonna be a nonprofit. So we might as well just make sure they provide the minutes.
What if it's a two-person nonprofit?
You gotta keep minutes, you gotta keep minutes.
I don't think there's gonna be a lot of groups out there trying to exploit this, but-
No, but if you put it in there, they'll think that.
I know, but it would say you have a two-person organization that, that we're a nonprofit and we wanna go put up some banners in our city, we would meet the requirements, now we can't.
Keep minutes. Well, I'm not saying you have to keep minutes for five years.
I'm, I'm not even asking about the minutes, I'm just saying about the limited amount of requirements. Like, we're, we're setting a policy that really almost allows something that you might not want. There's no discretion by the city in here.
Yeah, but do we really wanna give this kind of discretion?
Maybe. I, I, I don't know, do we? I just think there's maybe a-
You think it's too tight?
No, it's not tight enough. It's, it's, yeah, you, I can, I guarantee you I can find a nonprofit that you would not want my banner up there that fits these requirements right now and fits anything that we're gonna say. I'll make it happen if you want me to do it through it.
Well, let's test it.
It's gonna take five years, so. The point is, you, you could potentially get something that you really don't want, that can meet these requir- you couldn't set enough requirements to make-
Well, I think that was Leo's, I think, comment, why we should put something together to begin with, so.
But it, you may get the opposite side of it. Okay, we have these rules, but if something falls in the rules you still don't like, then you have no discretion still.
Well, but that's always the risk that you run with any of these things.
No, I agree, but I just, is there a, is there a way to have discretion in this? Still, someone has to approve it each time, I don't know.
Well, it comes with the council.
Could we ask enough to address the issues that have been raised and to bring it back next month for another go-round?
Yeah.
Rather than try to adopt something now and give you a list of things that have to change?
Address the concerns and try it again?
Yeah.
Rather do it right the first time and-
Yeah, find out we have a problem or we gotta correct it. Well, this isn't one you wanna get wrong.
No, exactly. Oh, it's our first, right, shot at it, I mean, shot at it.
We could always have the city attorney meet with the city administrator and have it change the night.
We could, and that, that's a good idea. I think it's a good, no, no, without us. Because I understand there's some stakes going, so if we, well. Yeah, that'll happen. Okay, so you bring that back. So with that, okay? Did I get enough direction, Kevin? Okay, good. So with that, we'll go to Department House. Chief?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, honorable city council members of the public. I just have, uh, two quick items, uh, for tonight. Uh, one is a reminder that tomorrow evening at seven PM, uh, we will have an area responsibility meeting. It's a quarterly meeting, uh, this will be for Area Four. Although topics from the general city will be discussed and available, uh, for discussion with the public. That'll be in our emergency operations center, uh, our training room, uh, in the police department tomorrow night. Uh, the second item is, the engineering department and the police department have been monitoring the intersection of, uh, West Milliloe Avenue and North Acacia Avenue, uh, for some time, regarding hazardous conditions or potential hazardous conditions due to the amount of vehicle traffic and the amount of traffic collisions that have been occurring at that intersection. Uh, recently, uh, the engineering department conducted a MUTCD, uh, traffic study. Uh, I'll let James explain that in the future if there's, if you have any questions about it, or what that comprises. But, uh, based on that traffic studies, uh, there are three conditions or combination of conditions that would encourage, uh, a traffic signal device at that intersection, other than the two-way stop that is currently there. At completion of that traffic study, uh, based on the amount of traffic, uh, at that intersection and the amount of collisions at that intersection, so a combination of both of those events indicate that a traffics, a four-way traffic signal should, uh, be erected at that intersection, which would create a four-way stop for both north and south on, uh, North Acacia, which currently exists, and east and west traffic on West Milliloe, which does not exist at this time. Uh, the installation of that four-way stop, we believe, would help reduce the traffic collisions that are currently occurring at that intersection and potential hazardous conditions for roadway obstruction. Uh, we're trying to, um, have people come to a stop at that intersection before they proceed into it and, uh, and avoid that hazardous condition. Uh, it is important to note that, uh, uh, the installation is for the safety of the intersection, not for speed control, as the study, uh, does not, uh, recommend stop signs for the slowing of traffic in that area. Uh, the als- also, the, uh, last item for that, uh, study, um, we reviewed the municipal code. It's, uh, section, uh, ten twelve. Uh, not only myself, the city administrator and the city attorney's office reviewed that. There is, uh, a couple of issues within our current ordinance that need to be addressed at a future, uh, date and time. Um, one is section, uh, ten twelve, section ten, which, uh, requires that a city council approval for any installation of traffic control devices. It kind, it conflicts with section, uh, ten twelve forty, uh, pern A and forty pern B, which gives the authority to the police chief to erect a traffic signal device within the city if hazardous conditions exist. Uh, so we, we're requesting that future, uh, date and time that that ordinance be cleared up. So there's no confusion, uh, confusion in the, in the future, should a traffic signal device be required within our city.
I was gonna ask you about those conflicting paragraphs, but, uh-
What, what we basically- Yeah, what we, what we came to determine that was that if there was no study, no MUTCD study, that a traffic signal device to be erected within our community would have to come at the direction of the city council. With a study that have taken place and the study recommending a traffic signal device being installed at that location, with that backup, the chief of police or me at the current time could go ahead and have that, uh, traffic signal device erected. A little confusing, but we wanna, um, take steps so in the future that there is no confusion and we take the most expeditious route and get into the control, get those traffic control devices, uh, in place.
Not everything, there's some challenging things here you can't face. Okay, so I wanna make a comment since we're still on the police department. It's not that it's, it's, I'm not gonna wait till my turn. So I went on a ride-along and I will tell you, with Officer Qualley, and I gotta tell you, Chief, professionalism, I, I saw four of your guys, they de-escalated the situation. I thought somebody was gonna get up and take you. And they went out there very professionally, very organized, decelerated what I thought was gonna be a terrible situation. And everybody walked away shaking hands. I saw when he, when they pulled people over, they weren't playing games just cause I was in the car. Because I sat in the car, I wasn't pulled to get out to stay in there, but I did, cause I wasn't gonna get out for any reason. And your people handled themselves in a very professional, organized manner. But I gotta tell you, it, I, it's really, I'm proud to be part of, not only the council, but the city. And it all comes from the top. And you can tell by talking to your officers, they don't just, they don't look at this as a job. They really care about the people. And I heard them explain to people why certain things they were doing were dangerous. It wasn't, here's your ticket, you know, pay the bill, so, um, I have nothing but good things to say. And I'm sure Ted took me on a ride someplace, I could say the same thing about his department and guys. But, but I did go on a ride-along and I, I, I compliment your team that you've put together, cause I think they handle themselves extremely well. And I'm, I'm very proud of them. And I think it, it goes to, um, why they're so well-recognized and liked in the community. People aren't afraid of our company, they're local people, they look at you as part of it. And so I think that's part of it, the attitude and, and the way they approach and deal with people. So congratulations and thanks.
Keep up the good work.
Ted? Ted?
Yes, I wanted to report on the water usage for October. It was twenty-one point one one three percent from our thir- two thousand and thirteen, uh, usage before the drought started. That brings our running, uh, twelve-month running average to twenty-three point eight percent. Uh, I just wanted to remind everybody that we are at the one-day water schedule currently. That's it.
Do you ride-alongs? Do you do ride-alongs?
Yeah, we, we can put you in the garbage truck.
How about an air-conditioned lawnmower?
Has our water guy been going out and checking on people watering? Cause there's a lot of people that are still on the three-day schedule, the three days.
We, uh, yes.
I can verify that, I got, I, I, I was, I forgot to turn my three-day timer off. I was really mad because I got this little warning and then I, oh, Ted, Ted said, we, last week, we went to Sunday's only.
So the guy is working.
Well, I see him out, wow, I see him out.
He's, uh, been extremely busy, especially after November first. Uh, we've issued a hundred and fifty-six notices, uh, since six November first. And then we've also got about forty more that we picked up last night. Uh, we had Bear Cruise, uh, the last week working overtime, uh, working through the middle of the night, making notices, just so we can remind people, uh, simple door hangers, that, uh, we are at a different, different schedule.
Thanks Ted. Bye, anything? Bye, anything? Nothing? Ken, anything else?
Yeah, um, Monday night, if you're sitting home and you're looking for something to do, you can come down to the planning commission meeting, and we are having one this month. Um, a couple items on there of interest on there. We are getting a, uh, the commission will be looking at a fast food restaurant near town. And Express is, uh, trying to locate here in town, uh, by Jack in the Box and Carl's Jr., so they'll be voting on that. And, uh, we will be reviewing the dimension regulation ordinance, which is, kinda deals with, um, deals with patio structures, accessory buildings that you see on lots, RV covers and such. Uh, we are adding some, uh, we are adding some, uh, provisions in there for our medium-density lots that are being built now out by, uh, Sports Park. So you'll see some of those changes. Uh, the planning commission, but we'll be reviewing that and making an recommendation to the city council, so that would hopefully, hopefully hit, uh, city council for, uh, the December meeting, the December meeting.
Anything from the engineering?
Yeah, just real quick, I, uh, just real quick, providing each one of the council members an updated project list. Um, you can see down at the bottom, we've added four projects since the, uh, the surplus. I won't go into all the changes, or all these, uh, changes, yeah, through, throughout these projects. Uh, most of them are minor. Minor, the one thing I will say is that we did our project last week, uh, the River Road Phase One project, we got favorable bids, so we're still evaluating those. Hopefully look to, uh, award something in December, award something in December.
Thank you.
On the list where it says, "Begin construction, complete," does that mean, does that mean, for instance, the traffic signal calling in Hough, does that mean by November of next year, we, you're having, the plan is we'd have a functioning, uh, traffic signal there?
Yeah, that's the goal. Yeah, that's the goal.
I just wanted to make sure that's what I was seeing.
Okay, council?
Uh, we just wanted to report, I also wanted to close session, that there was, uh, nothing to report, no action was taken, direction was given, stop on all three matters. Other than that, we're all good, other than that.
Thank you. Thank you for not reminding me. Kevin? Kevin? Daniel? Councilman?
Uh, nothing, uh, as usual. Thank you to the members of the public for being here. Uh, we enjoy, uh, they're actually here to listen to us.
Councilman Parks?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Vice Mayor Zubor? Are these the same things we got emailed? Okay. Okay, so nothing else? Nothing else. Meeting adjourned. Okay, Stacy, we're closed.